Okay, we are going to go ahead and come to order tonight. And for those who picked up an agenda, please ignore the 6:30 public hearing. That was a mistype. And that has been held twice. The Fifth District Project Plan has been adopted and is in the reference, or yes, the reference period at this time. So with that, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, call her own please.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Here.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mrs. Latham? And Mrs. Howesman?
Okay, we have a forum.
Mrs. Howesman called me this afternoon to tell me she wanted me to pass along. She actually has been appointed to the Advisory Committee for the Municipal League, and she is down there for meetings tonight.
All right, with that, we will consider approval of the minutes from, I mean, it's here, what date is that? September 19th. Comments, corrections, questions on the minute? Hearing none then. With that, we'll just use my voice as vote. All in favor of approval, aye.
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 Can you oppose? Okay, with that, we'll, and as sent approved is presented. Next item is a public forum, and let me, before we have the public come up, just introduce Ms. Carly Johnson with the Chamber of Commerce. Has a reminder announcement to make for us, so Ms. Carly, please. If you'd just grab the microphone and then face the audience, that'd be great. You may have to make sure it's on for us.
Hi, my name is Carly Johnson. I'm with the Rogersville Area Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of our Government Relations Issue Task Force, I'd like to invite you to attend the upcoming event for your candidates here in Lowell. We will begin with the Meet the Candidates Night this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30 at Tucker School here in Lowell. We hope that all candidates from the Lowell Office of Mayor, City Clerk, and City Council will be available during this time for Lowell residents to meet them and get to know them and answer any questions they might have about the issues of the election. The candidates for Mayor and City Clerk will then be answering questions in a formal format forum on the evening of Monday, October 23rd at 6:00 PM at the Tucker School. These forums will allow each of the candidates to introduce themselves and give a little information on their platform and candidacy. Then each candidate will answer a series of questions regarding the issue. If you have any questions regarding these events, I will leave flyers out at the front that you can pick up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carly. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll proceed on with our public forum. This gives everyone a chance to address myself or the council for any issue you would like to do so. If there's a specific item on the agenda, I encourage you to wait till that time. You'll have two minutes to do so at that time, or two minutes now to address this. And we'll take your comments under advisement, and we will start with Ms. Evelyn Bowen. If it's regarding your item on the agenda, we'll just have you wait till then. If it's something in general, okay, all right, great. Mr. John, I'm gonna have you hold off, so you're down here to make a public comment. Ms. Anna Plant? You're on the agenda, okay. We just have one signing sheet tonight. Mr. Guy Shoemaker?
Guy Shoemaker, 315 Center Drive Lowell. As you know, I'm a booger on paperwork. I spent a lot of time doing paperwork in the military. I got the minutes again, reading them. This last month was twice. An FOI was presented to this council, and it was not put in the minutes. An FOI. And I called the Attorney General's office. Should always be in the minutes because nobody can prove what was done. Now, Mr. Breland requested it the first Tuesday in September, and he requested again on the third Tuesday. I guess he got what he would've needed on the third Tuesday. But, an FOI has to be completed in 72 hours. And I want to thank Mary and the Fire Department for providing me with the information that I had requested on an FOI. Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Sand, uh, Ms. Sandra Jarrett.
Sandra Jarrett, Lowell, Arkansas. I am here to request $5,100 for the salary that I did not receive because of the erroneous actions of the council in June of 2001. According to Arkansas State Statute 14-42-1013, an elected or appointed official's salary cannot be decreased unless such action is requested by that official. And I can assure you that I did not request that decrease in salary from $500 a month to $400 a month. And when I questioned the action, I was told there was nothing I could do about it. But I understand that according to the state statute, it should not have been done, and so therefore, I feel like that the only way to correct this mistake is for me to be paid the salary that I should have received then. I am not asking for the amounts of the, I believe, one annual increase I received, which should have upped the salary even more, and I'm not asking for any of the interest that I could have accrued for this amount. All I'm asking for is the $100 a month that my salary was decreased by in June of 2001.
Okay, Ms. Sandra, if you'd just hold on a minute. I'm gonna turn this timer off. Just a quick question to clarify for me, and Tom's getting ready to respond, but I thought, I thought we responded in letter?
Nope. Nope. Mr. Jarrett, may I meet you about this? I don't know if you want to say the whole meeting, but, um...
No, I don't.
Okay. May we talk about tomorrow at work?
Uh, that will be fine.
Because I don't think they can make a motion tonight anyway, but there, but I did the figures, based on the information that I asked the mayor to get me and Mary to get me. So I did those figures, and I want to get with you, show you exactly what I, what I came up with.
Well, it's $100 a month.
Right.
For 51 months.
All the ordinances and all that kind of thing, so, can we do that tomorrow?
Well, yes.
It'll be, no, you can't do it right now, tonight. Wish I could, should've done it before now, but can we do it tomorrow?
Yeah, because I called you three weeks ago.
And that's, well, I came to them and got the information.
I did request this to be researched and information to be gathered three weeks ago, and I had heard nothing from anyone. That's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, with that, I do not have anyone else signed up. If you're new to our procedure and not familiar with it, I always give you an opportunity to take advantage of it. Is there anyone who would like to do so? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum and move on to committee reports. Mr. Williams, you are down for a park committee report.
Yes, we had the groundbreaking Saturday, and it went off very well. It was very successful. I think everyone had a good time, and I just want to thank all the businesses and individuals involved. I think, I think it went very well. I spoke with Jean yesterday, and she wants for the parks committee and the people involved to get together on the 12th at 6:00 PM, just to kind of sign some thank you cards and show our appreciation toward the community, the people involved. So, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to schedule that. It's coming, or not, a week from Thursday at 6:00 PM. Is that okay with you, Darren?
No objection, we'll consider that done. Let's make sure and put on this calendar for the girls in the office, which is, sorry, what date was that, Mr. Key?
It's October 12th.
6:30?
Yes. October 12th, 6:00 PM.
Yeah, City Admin?
City Admin, yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to our agenda items. No old business. First item on new, new business is an ordinance, a rezon by Ms. Anna Plant. Mr. Carnehan, do you want to present this, or is Ms. Plant? Okay. Just briefly, I guess, your name and, and your request for the council.
Plant, 903 909 McClure, which is down that way at the end, in O'Leary Road. I wanted to rezone our property since we were incorporated into the city without our knowledge, and I wanted to rezone it from residential to RO or commercial, whatever you want to give me. It's three acres. I have four businesses there, and out of the four businesses, I have four business licenses, Chamber of Commerce, and I want to get all my ducks in a row, even though I know I can grandfather whatever I'm doing in. I don't want it that way. I want it actually zoned.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Plant? Are you looking to, are you looking to expand, or?
No, probably decrease. But I just want it taken care of.
Any, any other questions? Just remember, this, this is done by ordinance. It comes recommended, I believe, by the Planning Commission. Is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Wright, okay. Mr. Wright?
I move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on third and final reading. Second.
So, the motion has been made to suspend a rule, place on third and final. This will require all of you to be in a vote tonight to suspend the rule. Keep that in mind with that. Ms. Beverly, roll call, please.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Rule is suspended. That will be an ordinance amending the City Lowell Code of Ordinances, Section 8-102, by rezoning certain lands from residential District RC to retail office RO. With that, do we have a do pass? Motion for do pass?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrell, second by Mr. Williams. Comments, discussion? Okay, hearing none then. Roll call. Yes vote approves the rezon, no vote denies.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Motion carries. And we do not have an emergency clause, so that will take effect in 40 days.
Thank you. Thank you all. And this is number 767.
Okay, next item is an ordinance in order to authorize short-term financing for the Liddell District Water Project. Forgot a minute ago, Mr. Garrett, you presented, and we'll open it up to the public.
Last City Council meeting, you passed an ordinance basically executing the Liddell Road Water Extension. Section 3 of that particular ordinance mentioned the fact that we needed to obtain, that we needed to have a loan for $225,000, and that that loan needed to be approved by a separate ordinance. So tonight, I'm bringing you an ordinance. We have Mr. Kiklak and the attorney for, Mr. Miller, who's the attorney for the bank, have been working back and forth on this ordinance. So the one in front of you, that's a two-page, that's on two pages, is the final version. And it essentially establishes a $225,000 loan for a five-year term at an interest rate not to exceed 4.99 percent. And as we said before, it will be a construction draw type loan, so that when we complete the construction, we will modify the loan so that it's only for the actual amount that we've spent, which we think will be closer to $200,000. But to allow for contingencies and so on, the bank has approved a $225,000 loan for us. So we hope that you will pass this ordinance and approve the loan tonight, so we can start construction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna go ahead and open up public forum on this item, if anyone would like to address that. Anyone? Quiet group tonight, so with that, we're seeing none. We will move on, close the public forum. And it's before you, council, first we'll have to suspend the rules if you so choose to do so. Our motion to suspend the rules, read by title only. Place on third and final reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Morrell, second by Mr. Spurlock. Suspend the rule.
Can I get a clarification? Is this the version that has eight sections? The version has seven sections. I had two copies sitting in my desk tonight. One has eight sections. Okay, all right.
Good question. Rule has been suspended. Take all a votes to suspend a rule. Roll call, please.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Rule is suspended, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a short-term financing loan agreement pursuant to amendment 7080 of the Arkansas Constitution and certain documents related thereto for the purpose of constructing the Liddell Road Waterline improvements. Do we have a do pass?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Spurlock, second by Ms. Morrell. All right, comments, discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll on that. A yes vote approves the ordinance, and no vote would deny.
Mr. Wright?
Upstain.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
We have five yes, so motion carries.
Ordinance number 768.
This does have an emergency clause attached to it. Move to adopt the emergency clause?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Morrell, second by Mr. Solomon to adopt the emergency clause. This will take, again, all a's to do so. Roll call, please.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Emergency clause is adopted by two-thirds. With that, next item is appointment of Code Enforcement Official, Chief. I'm gonna allow you to introduce and bring that to the council. I think we have an initiation ceremony right after you finish.
I'll let y'all have him after that. Pretty much conversed with all the council, I think. I think they know what our requests are for the record. We are requesting that the code official be transferred from the fire chief to Billy Hensley. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I do have a couple statistics I'd like to give you, just, just for general information that you may not know. Since 2001, when we initiated the Code Enforcement Office, we've got 1,170 complaints, which resulted in 4,087 inspections or follow-ups to date. So I think it's pretty impressive. To date, we've got 30 cases that are outstanding out of all those. Everything else has been resolved. We've been in court six times and won six times. So, I'm not blowing my own horn because Billy and Bill Boyd have done most of that. I've been their boss, but they've carried the load. I think it's time to transfer that load, put it where it belongs. They got my full support. I appreciate your approval. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions? That just is, it's an agenda item we're gonna open up to the public, so perhaps real close in case there's a question. Anyone like to address this from the public? If so, please come quickly to the microphone, state your name for the record, and we'll give you two minutes.
Chief, I want to thank you, Guy Shoemaker. I want to thank you for actually getting the code enforcement out of fire station. It don't belong there. My personal feelings, from my experiences with the insurance industry, most of them are in the city engineer's office. And Chief, I want to congratulate you for bringing Lowell one step closer into the 21st century. Thank you.
Don't worry, Mary, you don't have to set the timer. I've got it going. Ronnie Breland, 119 South Brandon. Chief, you're right. When you brought Billy to do the code, you've done a good thing. I think Billy'd be a good leader, and I think he needs to run the code enforcement off on his own. He's done a good job running it, and he'd be a good asset to run in a department of his own. So if council deems it necessary, he'd be a good asset to have. Okay, anyone else? That, we're gonna go ahead and close public forum then. Counsel's before you. This will just be by a motion that you'll do so. Any questions regarding that item?
Maybe we approve the appointment?
Motion by Mr. Spurlock, second by Mr. Wright. Just to clarify the record, the appointment is of Lieutenant Billy Hensley as the Code Enforcement Official for the City of Lowell. With that, comments, questions? Ms. Clerk, call her own, please. Yes vote approves so.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries, so initiation starts immediately following the council meeting, sir. If you want to do that, if you want to do Let's Choose Lowell next? Okay, okay. Just so these folks don't have to stay, if they want to move on, before you, I would like to ask the council to consider amending the agenda. These folks thought they had a rezon on the agenda tonight. We did not get them there. This is the property that the Arkansas State Police Headquarters is looking at. It's been to the Planning Commission on September the 18th, I believe is correct. Comes recommended by them. Sorry, Mr. Tom has done the ordinance, and I guess it is displayed on the screen if you want to take a couple of minutes. I know this is not the norm, but they, they thought they were here, and it's gonna take you by two-thirds to waive your rule, but the document has to be reduced in writing prior to the meeting. So we'll have to do that first, and then place, I'm sorry, amend the agenda first, and then, then waive the rule for the document. So if you take a minute, I'll place it before you for your action.
For those that weren't at that Planning Commission meeting, which I was, might be informative, is a little bit exciting. I thought that we're gonna have a State Patrol Office, the Group L in Springdale, is gonna be relocating to Lowell, and that's the purpose for, for the rezon. And they were gracious enough to go through the Planning Commission process, and I think we owe it to them. There was, there was some problem with paperwork or getting them on the agenda in some way, and I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda for that purpose.
Okay, motion made, a second to amend the agenda, and we'll call a roll on this. It'll take two-thirds to do so. Ms. Beverly, roll call, please.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Okay, two-thirds carry, so that will be item number five, in consideration of rezon ordinance for certain lands from residential RA to commercial. With that, let me just, so we're official, go ahead and ask for a, a motion to waive your rule of having the document reduced to writing prior to the council. Pardon me?
Just to give you some during. Just thought it had to be reduced to the writing.
Yeah, you might say that. It might say just reduce to writing. And I think this council's reduced to writing.
Okay. So with that, if there are no objections, we'll consider this as being reduced to writing. Seeing no objections, then, this is the ordinance before you to be considered. Again, it's an ordinance, we'll have to have the rule waived, that first public comment. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment on this item. And before you, if to be considered first, is to waive the rule, place on, for a second or third reading. I will, motion to suspend the rule, place on third and final reading. Read by title only, please.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mistress Morrell, second by Mr. Solomon, an ordinance amending the City Lowell Code of Ordinances, Section 8-102, by rezoning certain lands from residential RA to commercial C. With that, do we have a do pass?
So moved.
Give Mr. Williams the motion on that. We're trying to get this done in the wrong way here. Okay, let's call a roll on, suspend, this is a do pass, right?
Yes, suspend.
Okay, suspend the rules. It'll take two-thirds to do so. Roll call, please.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Okay, two-thirds carries. With that, we'll consider a do pass.
So moved.
Mr. Williams, motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Wright. Comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call a roll on this. This is a do pass, so yes vote approves, and no vote denies.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Spurlock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Okay, do pass carries, and...
Should this have an emergency clause?
Does not. Does not, doesn't need one. It has a, it has a reference period of its own for our rezon. Okay, I think I picked up something that there's no address on this. If we look, it is located on Gold Springs Road, north of Highway 264, property owned by Ms. Evelyn Bowen. 322 North Gold Springs Road, and, and Mr. Carnehan has an attachment of the legal description of survey. Okay. Okay. Good, good point. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Ms. Bowen had something that you wanted to say.
Well, they did, they did.
You don't want to snatch the feet from the jaws of victory.
All right. Okay, with that, we'll move on. Presentation of Let's Choose Lowell by Mr. Carnehan, Community Development.
While that's, while we're getting that back up, I'll just kind of lead into this a little bit and say that you know that we prepared a brochure called Let's Choose to Live in Lowell that we passed out some time ago, talking about the reasons that people might choose to live in Lowell. And we also had prepared, that's the, the red brochure, Let's Choose to Grow with Lowell, which talks about why businesses would want to relocate or expand their businesses in Lowell. And we have taken the two, the two of these, and you'll see that as we go along here, we're gonna...
here, we're gonna change, uh, colors, uh, during the PowerPoint presentation, from blue to red. But we just took kinda the highlights of these two brochures and made a quick, uh, PowerPoint, and we've had the opportunity to present it now to two different organizations, and, uh, it has been well-received, uh, both times. So, we hope that in the future, we'll have more opportunities to present this, uh, presentation, and if you know of an opportunity to do so, just let us know. Now, hopefully, I can work this work, but, uh, let's see if this, Ryan said I would know if it was working if, um, anyway, let's try here. But basically, uh, the whole idea is the location of Lowell, and it's kinda captured in this thought that if you lived in Lowell, you would already be home, because you're closer to home in Lowell than other places. Oh, great. And why would someone choose to live in Lowell? Uh, excellent schools, great churches, Northwest Arkansas Center for Children, Ozark Area Transit System. We have the hometown events that you're familiar with, and we have, what, the big barbecue coming up soon. We have over five thousand, probably six thousand jobs in Lowell. Great fire and police protection, good insurance rating, new home sites, and affordable housing. So, it's a great place to raise a family and a great reason to live in Lowell. We have a highly educated population, uh, which, uh, surprisingly, is almost double the state average of people in Lowell who have a, uh, college degree. So, we have a highly educated population, and actually, our median income is the third highest in the state. Uh, we have these hometown events we talked about, and which you're all familiar with, Chili Cook Off, Muddtown Days, and the, uh, Fall Festival. You'll be getting a brochure, your, uh, news Fall Newsletter in the mail at the end of this week, highlighting the Fall Festival, and of course, the Christmas presentation. We have a lot of, uh, neat opportunities, McClure Park and Lowell Park, with playgrounds, pavilions, and ball fields. Uh, also, uh, there we go. We have our, uh, baseball team, the Lowell Piranhas, third place at the state tournament. That's pretty good for a small town. We're very, uh, happy for them and their success. We have the new park coming soon. We just had the groundbreaking last Saturday, had a lot of families. Uh, the thing I appreciated was, as the morning went on, more and more moms and dads with kids in hand, walking across the street or right off, uh, out of the other Southview neighborhood, right through the field, to, uh, enjoy the park and the hayride and the hot dogs and everything. One lady told Kelly that they had, were going to put their house on the market and move because they wanted to upgrade their home, but be, and they lived right there near the park and had walked over. And she said, because of this park, we've decided we're just gonna remodel our house and stay where we are. I thought that was a great testimony. Of course, we have a wonderful museum with a lot of great history. Glenn Jones does a great job with that, promoting Lowell, uh, not just in Lowell, but he's all over Northwest Arkansas and even around the country, and he's talking about Lowell and the history of Lowell everywhere he goes. Uh, so, we think we have a great location and a great attitude because of the small-town hometown feel that we have here in town. When we talk about location, we know that I-540 and 71B are closer together here than anywhere else in Northwest Arkansas. We're projected to grow at a faster rate than not just the US average or the Arkansas average, but a faster rate than the Northwest Arkansas average. Uh, easy-to-build land, close to schools, airport, new shopping nearby, jobs, Ozark Transit System. We have two miles of frontage on 540 on each side. So, we have a lot of untapped, great resource there with a great location. Uh, great public schools, uh, where they, uh, we have, uh, what, zero miles to the elementary school and Tucker School, five miles to the junior high. I think you can have your child grow up in Lowell and go all the way through the, uh, Rogers School System and not have to be more than about a six-mile drive from the middle of Lowell. That's pretty impressive. So, we're, uh, we call ourselves a connecting link in Northwest Arkansas. We have great shopping, all within just a few miles' drive of Lowell, and hopefully, as a town, as we continue to grow, we'll have more shopping in Lowell. But for now, if you're located in Lowell, you can get to, uh, in fifteen minutes, you can be at three big malls, and a lot of small places in between. Good entertainment, Jones Center is only six miles away. Uh, Beaver Lake is a great recreational and entertainment resource in Northwest Arkansas. And again, we're closer to Beaver Lake than just about any place in Northwest Arkansas. And in twenty miles, you can be at the Walton Art Center or Dixon Street. We have good medical facilities, again, all within a few miles' drive. We have, uh, four great hospitals, and, uh, we have University of Arkansas, Northwest Arkansas Community College, and John Brown University are all easily commute, easy commutes if you live in Lowell. The airport's only eleven and a half miles away. It's interesting to see who lives in Lowell. Uh, the, um, young, uh, children, about a fourth of our population are, uh, young kids, and it matches up that a forty percent are twenty-five to forty-four years old. So, we have a prime labor force with a lot of young children, lot of, uh, and we have, uh, you know, a pretty good distribution of age types, uh, in the city. So, a good, good mix of people, a lot of young families, a lot of new places under construction, new homes out there that we can see. Today, I was driving around, looking at some of those really beautiful homes and a lot of different choices of types of neighborhoods to live in. Over a thousand new home sites, uh, available. We have JB Hunt, Walmart, and Tyson Foods, three of the largest employers in America, uh, right here within quick access from Lowell. Of course, JB Hunt is in Lowell. So, a lot of jobs. So, we wanna choose to live in Lowell, but also, we want businesses to choose to grow with Lowell, just like tonight, uh, the State Police, uh, they're going to move their drivers, uh, they're moving four different operations that are in different facilities in Northwest Arkansas into Lowell, into one facility on a ten-acre tract. All of their, um, patrolmen and so on, plus their driver's education, driver's licensing, and a state revenue office where you can go renew your tags and your driver's license will all be located here in Lowell. So, that's another, that's the latest example of someone who's chosen to grow with Lowell. So, uh, if you think about it, it makes perfect sense that a trucking company figured it out first. That Lowell was a great location, because they, um, who knows more about location than a trucking company? Mike Solomon can tell us this. You know, they're thinking about wear and tear on, uh, vehicles, uh, gas, uh, fuel economy, uh, people being away from home, uh, getting home more quickly, having more quality time with their families and so on. A trucking company has to take all those things into account. So, yeah, I think it's, uh, interesting that a trucking company was the first one to say, hey, let's go get in the middle of Northwest Arkansas where Lowell is, and then soon after, our best, and the Democrat Gazette, Transplace, AERT, others figured that out, that Lowell was the connecting link in Northwest Arkansas. And we're the connecting link to two of the fastest-growing counties in the United States, not just in Arkansas, but in the United States. We've had, since nineteen ninety, our population growth was four hundred, or was four hundred and sixty percent growth, according to the Regional Planning Commission. We have a great location. Our daily traffic counts are shown on this map. On I-540, we have about sixty-five thousand vehicles a day, thirty-three thousand on 71 Business, and between I-540 and 71 Business, twenty-two thousand cars a day decide to make that connecting link between those two highways. Uh, some new things that we have under construction, World Gym, as we talked to them today, they're gonna start, they're gonna try to start their facility in November. One of the largest gyms in their system across the United States. Aaron Nickel Homes, you can see now the shape of that building, Bloomington Crossing, the corner of Bloomington and McClure. It's gonna be a very attractive building. Northwest Arkansas Center for Children, again, you can see that building, the, the construction progress, they're really on a fast track there. Very nice. And, um, we have other places that we don't have pictures for here, we need already update this since we made this slide, but Park Central, the Vineyards, Kimberly Plaza, lot of new businesses in town there. I had breakfast over in Kimberly Plaza the other day, and I didn't have to eat the rest of the day. It was awesome. So, here are some of the name brands that we have in town now with ribbon cuttings. Uh, a couple of other name brands that I know are coming that are not shown here. The Culligan, um, again, the Culligan Water Company is, wants to move their production facility here from, uh, other locations in Northwest Arkansas and combine them here. And also, there soon will be having the logo up here of the, uh, Starbucks Coffee Shop in Lowell. So, we're adding name brands all the time. We have other things coming in the future that people have talked about, Lowell Landing, Lowell Professional Center, Commerce Center, Lowell Station, Town Center. Uh, we have, uh, we, by the way, we have, um, executed the notice to proceed on the new sewer main from Springdale, so their time that they have to build that sewer main is ticking now. They're, they're on the clock, so to speak, and we have a lot of major road projects that we'll be talking to you about, uh, in the next couple of months with our budgeting and our capital improvements program. So, we're very excited about the future growth in Lowell here. Um, let's see, and of course, uh, another name that I forgot to throw out is FedEx. You probably have heard by now, is moving, we just approved last night, the Large-Scale Development Plan, the Planning Commission approved, uh, FedEx moving all of their van, delivery vans in Northwest Arkansas to Lowell. Huge operation. So, anyway, we think that Lowell is Arkansas's next success story, and we're excited to be a part of it, and know that you are too, so our final line is here is Let's Choose Lowell. So, thank y'all for letting me share that with you, and if you know anyone else that would like to see that, it doesn't take but a few minutes to go through it, and we love to tell the story. So, thank you.
I appreciate it very much, Gary, and please give them a hand. Staff has done a great job. And they have been out in the community showing this video to, to the Real Estate, Northwest Arkansas Real Estate Association, I think, to the public service groups, and it's catching on, Let's Choose Lowell. I believe Lowell is a place that people are choosing. So, with that, I have no further business, and we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion probably made in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.